That's not my good stall.
Do you want to move this more toward the center? Move this mic more to the center.
This will be for public comment. I think I got a little bit of... Once I got the code and what we're talking about, I think I should be able to. I don't miss it. This time I would be more excited.
All right, Mr. Chris Hughes. Okay, sure. Aye.
Father, we are so thankful to be able to come together at this roundtable to talk about... But there's so many things that impact us about the day, Father. Play is family, practice is family, policy is family. I just pray that some of those things just kind of get away from those things that we've been together and talking about. The opportunity, ten women that are representing me. So many things. Thank you for allowing my family to be part of this. Father, we love you.
Amen. Don't they issue one of the latest in the pledge allegiance?
The allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a moment of silence now in recognition of the US military serving here and abroad in our public safety. Jerry, Jerry, have we got any additions to the agenda? I would like to make a change to the agenda on working on the budget in open session because it is not quite ready to... In the open, we're still waiting on some figures and some more information. You got a motion on that? Let her turn the motions that we don't do the budget discussion. Still waiting on some more figures. Budget Committee has one meeting, so we're not quite prepared to turn it over. I'll say. Second. That has a motion. I'll make. Right. Budget question. For the budget. Yeah, move second. I'll say. Better motion, better second. I'll vote. Should we start? Start with Mr. Derwalt. Mr. Loach. That's very. Mr. Samuel. I'll vote aye. Stroke. Did you have another addition about the sudden appearance that we had on... Show more on us? We'll go to public comment next. Do you have anybody signed? Got Mr. Kirk Bosenmeyer. Smith River.
Facing the opposite side of the room tonight. All right, in a departure from my normal presentations, I don't have any formally written remarks here because I came here mainly to see if we were going to do anything about the solar ordinance tonight. And I'm going to take the opportunity to speak a little bit about the solar ordinance coming up pretty soon. I've been serving on the planning commission for a year and a half. We have spent many hours talking about solar ordinance in addition to a lot of the other things that we've been working on, part of which was the comprehensive plan passed by this board a few months back. And when I learned that there was a problem with the solar ordinance today, I started going back through my notes, through the meeting minutes, and trying to find out where problems came about. And I put together a little bit of a timeline here. And looking back again at the work we've done with the planning commission, I see that January 20th of 2022, our chairman Larry Cowley told the planning commission that we need a solar energy facilities ordinance, which we were not aware that we needed such a thing at that time. On March 1st, our updated comprehensive plan was sent to the supervisors. And on April 11th, the comprehensive plan was adopted by the supervisors. At this time, we did not know that we needed to say anything in the comprehensive plan about the possibility of solar facilities coming into the county. To our best of our knowledge, no applications had been put in for a solar farm, and nobody notified the planning commission that anything like this was pending. Anyway, we worked on the solar ordinance, aware that something like this could happen. On April 19th, '22, we had a draft solar ordinance that was reviewed and revised. August 16th, that solar ordinance was sent to the county attorney for review and then to the supervisors. On September 12th, 2022, Mr. Cowley presented the solar ordinance to the supervisors. On September 26th, '22, we had a public hearing. There were no speakers about the solar ordinance, and the solar ordinance was adopted unanimously by the board of supervisors. Then in November 15th, we moved on to a solar revenue sharing ordinance that was discussed and again sent to the county attorney. Now, back in April of last year, when we reviewed and revised that solar ordinance, we were mostly concerned with the nuts and the bolts of what needed to be included in the ordinance and what needed to be excluded. And we realized as a commission, we didn't really know all that much about it. Fortunately, we had the assistance of Mr. Jason Brown here, who was very concerned that we would put together an ordinance that would be effective and particularly from his standpoint, that it would be enforceable. So that's where we focused our attention. But when we sent this to the county attorney for review in August last year, we did not have any language in there about what part of the Virginia code was applicable to this. We depended on the county attorney to come up with that. Now, since learning that there's a problem with the solar ordinance and/or the comprehensive plan, which we haven't nailed down yet, we've got a special meeting called on Wednesday of this week to make the necessary changes that we need to do to make this thing enforceable. So I won't go into the whole thing about the code of Virginia and why we're finding out six months later that the incorrect portion of the code of Virginia was cited in this thing prior to it being approved by the supervisors. I just want to go back to other information that I've uncovered since then, specifically that on November 11th of the year 2020, the Department of Environmental Quality of Virginia, their map shows a solar site on Commerce Street here in Stewart. And on January 10th of 2022, the Department of Environmental Quality posted a notice of intent by a corporation called Fairystone Solar that said that they were in the process of seeking necessary documentation and permits to go move forward with planning this solar farm on Commerce Street. And I'm kind of curious at this point, how did nobody in this county know anything about this solar farm? All right, there were rumors, you know, there's something going on on Commerce Street, but somebody in this county had to see some documentation. There had to be paper crossed a desk or a counter somewhere. My question is, how come the planning commission wasn't notified? If anyone can answer that in this room, I'd really appreciate hearing the details behind this. Other than that, I guess we'll just have to wait until this thing is discussed in open session. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bosenmeyer. I'll get your name right, won't you do? This is the only one we had on public comment, so we'll close public comment. The next thing we had was county attorney's full year training, right?
Chairman, I think I'll be heard better if I... So you had asked, and the state code does require periodic training on the Freedom of Information Act as well as the Public Act. So we're going to cover both briefly for all night. And we'll start with the Freedom of Information Act. As with most legislative enactments, understanding the purpose is very helpful in how to abide the act. So keep in mind the purposes under which the General Assembly passed Freedom of Information Act. One was to have ready access to public records. The other was to make sure that everyone could enter meetings of public bodies when the business people's being conducted. But you start from the premise that all public records and meetings shall be presumed open unless there's an exemption that is properly... So instead of having to prove that it's open, we go the other way. Everything's open. It takes certain things out. The other thing that the legislature emphasized that even when treated is that it is deliberately construed. And what that means is it may not cover in its garbage the whole waterfront, but it's covering water. That's the idea behind the liberal construction. It's... There are two reasons for that. One, promote increased awareness of all person government activities. That's always a good thing. Two, afford every opportunity that is listed operations of government. Again, making sure that all your public sides are open. And also make it even the active covers things like... Very, very important fact. So the meanings, definitions are very important. Meetings is probably the one that calls as much consternation among folks. They include work sessions, sitting physically or through electronic communication as a body or an entity or as an informal assembly. This is where we always talk about the three people. You have three elected officials, and you discuss county business considered a... Or if, let's say, this is for a board of three, not the car couple. Forum two could be... Same concept, enough folks to carry the day. Now, don't have to... It works, I don't say... Taking minutes doesn't necessarily make it a... But if it isn't, you've got to take it. But you keep it in mind that way. If two of you are meeting with two school board members, it doesn't necessarily mean... Because it's not free. Got to make sure of that. The other thing is, this is often misunderstood and often wronged citizens for the force of concern regarding the four years. We can't prevent you from being in the same place. You may all end up, or three of you may end up at dinner at the same restaurant. It may be... Other at recital, whatever. It only matters if you're talking about public business. By urging you, be very, very careful. If you do end up getting a ribbon cutting or whatever, just don't talk about public business. The other thing we'll do is many times when we know that's coming, often times we'll go ahead and advertise it anyway, just to be on the safe side. You'll see notices to meetings sometimes go, you know, what are we talking about? And it may just be that all of you are going to be in the same place. Desperate to go about it. And if the public decides they want to come to ribbon cutting as well, that's great. All citizens are welcome. So as I said earlier, we start from the premise of open... Close meetings are a purpose. There's an interesting notice that says close meetings. I do this for a lot of government committees. And they are called everything from second session, close, whatever. But the term it uses in the statute is close meetings. All right, so... We have several exemptions that we'll go over that are the main one. First one is 3711. 3711A, old one is the first. That is discussion consideration, interview of prospective candidates. It's important to keep in mind... And to give you the example, the Attorney General has occasion to issue an opinion to affect that legislative body. Counsel can only discuss that folks face fire and bar. In the county, that's county administrator. Most counties, that's... Cities, city manager, city attorney. There are some places where, I think in some cities, where some financial records are also council. Generally, what the Attorney General has said is, you don't get to go into closed meetings, talk about employees further down the line. You've got to be at top level, county administrator, county attorney. And the reason we know that they're directly... Really, we often acquisition of public real property for a public purpose or property. That's the kind of a no brainer, by the way. The bottom line is, the last thing you want to do is have a meeting about to talk about decide on buying these properties, how much you pay for it. In open meetings, because guess what? It becomes a part of the record. So it's very important that that type of subject matter is discussed in a closed meeting. Number five, professional perspective, expansion of business. This is... We use it. And for the public, I would say the reason we use it is everybody talks about bringing a business to locality. Nobody wants it public. For the life of me, and I've been doing this for how long? I still have never heard a good explanation of why these companies don't want public. Really, they've already got the option to plan, everything comes us. Nonetheless, that's the way it is right now in economic... Fraktion. From the state level on down. And the other thing that happens in this situation is that the governor has a fund called the opportunity fund, which there is money from Richmond that'll be basically funneled through the county to possibly... And they don't want it announced until they decide it's in their best interest as well. Well, we don't want it to come out. We want the governor to make it out. Not available for free. That's where we are. So there are a lot of folks, had a lot of newspapers that can't stand that. They don't appreciate the fact that it's not our idea. But nonetheless, there's a chance that there's a business that's going to come here and pay taxes and all that ass and why time comes to announce it. Everybody's best interest. That's why the statute says it. Investment of public funds for competition bargains involved. That could be anything from entering into a contract, considering bids, a number of them, where you want to make sure that you not talk about what the price is going to be before you send out with the bid. If you're a bidder, know how much the county's got to spend. That's probably what you want to do. Every... Every kid able to negotiate off of price. There are two different legal counsel numbers. I happen to think it was that important. But in fact, there are actually two different subject matters. One, talk about actual probability. And the other is to ask the legal counsel questions regarding... Something you don't necessarily have. Think about it again for other... That's why there's attorney by privilege. And all this does is put that into the statute, give that fruit legislative body. Question of award of public contract in terms of contract. There are lots of times where we're negotiating back and forth. And the last thing we do is discuss the terms of contract for business reasons in an open session. Fair court has made it very clear though in one of the cases that once you reach terms, you can't just go into closed meetings, talk about it. You've got to have a purpose. There's got to be something left to be done on that contract. Thirty-three is one that has changed a little bit over the years. Lots of times when we get bids or we get information in, it'll include criteria, records, trades, how they do a particular function or whatever. And almost every company is going to tell you that the way they do it is perceived as very, very hush-hush. They don't want their competitors to know and all that. And as a result, we are constantly getting a mark, criteria, trade, whatever. Get a request, looking at it. And maybe we don't understand it as well as people who are giving us that information, but it doesn't really look like a trade. But what has happened is there's an additional statute that the legislature passed three years ago that sub that definition was proprietary, something was free. What we've done in response is when we are told, when we get bids for things and the bidders say, oh yeah, this is proprietary, we generally respond with, this is... Get a request for it. It's not our... We don't care. So far here, we haven't really had that problem. I have had it in other places where they don't want to give it up. They'll get bothered, actually go to court. go to court, not ours. Contrary to what a lot of folks in public think, you don't get to vote in closed meetings in a senate. It doesn't say you can't vote, it doesn't say you can't agree, it just says it doesn't become effective if you do it publicly. So the term that you often hear is, reached consensus. The board has reached consensus that it's going to do this, and it sends out to county attorney and county administrator. And we're comfortable, say, entering into a contract with somebody, we're comfortable going about that, going, it'll be a fun, a tough contract or not. Don't think that you can't, county knows it, but ultimately, have to do it publicly. The motion, I think, working, why, go into open, identify the subject matter, state purposes, make reference, review requirement with every motion, and you require, when you come back out of the closed meeting that you certified, only talk about what you said you were going to talk about, filed by the statute, then. Some folks take motions to come out of the closed meeting, some don't, I don't necessarily agree, but feel better, feels like it makes them feel a little better sometimes, hooking back, reel for the door, not everybody else. Alright, public record, and you see there's, that's a very broad definition, but basically, I'd say that complies with public, including, for example, emails upon you, emails upon staff, taxman, they don't have to be, things don't have to be necessarily written. And if you get, one of the reasons that we stress, mail address that the county has for your county business, make it easier for people to request your email, for us to be able to get them, the IT department, because if you dial on your own computer, you had to bring it in, and that, but if everything's on the county server, then it's not very easy for the IT to find out, make the spot, to deliver the list. So if you've, those personal records, any transactions, public business, are subject FOIA, and it, I can tell you that, it was a case a couple weeks ago, where there was a bit of a staff, public council members in the city, trying to decide who was a real member of the party, who wasn't, a lot of the stuff was fair, they ended up, and everything else, and it was really a, kind of an embarrassing play. And so one of the council members, I think, oh, what this, other FOIA. So, expression, you're going to put it in front, and you don't have to put it in front of them, especially if you're, that sort of thing, I think it's the, kind of, the exact quote, something on the line, that legislating, watching sausage, the result is fine, but you don't like sausage. As a result, not necessarily committing all the favor. Another warning, every time I do this, I get a head of myself on it, never hurts twice, be aware that your emails, text messages, county or advisor, if you are in doubt, the worst that can happen is we get it, that doesn't, that's not county. Now by statute, after, I think he fails, there's, but there's a, there, that's a URL, I've worked in, required to issue regulations, they have what I consider not all, it's a pure, but if the fact of the print is really fine, go in, find exactly what it is, and it'll tell you how long it is. Generally, generally, other than texts, not much, that's less, so, don't, if you're getting ready, one of the great things about having accounts like, or things like that, stored in the cloud, or whatever you call it, you've got Outlook or something like that on your computer, side your things, that doesn't, you can download that, copy it, don't have that happen, very careful. Conflict of interest act, I have, all the freedom of expression, hasn't been said yet, there've been a couple of attorney general opinions, and I've seen a couple of other county attorneys, uh, email screens where everybody's on it, are probably, probably about the, very, you're all on it, because you're, hey, what do you think of this? Everybody's on it, talk about it publicly. So, I would urge you not, not that I think, I don't have it, but I think we've talked about it another time, but everybody's been, that's not, it's not a meeting yet, the ball's headed. Last, fact, that hasn't happened, so, again, emails. The conflict of interest act, incredibly bulky, incredibly complicated, to think that it's covered by just saying, don't do something, don't, don't try to pay fraud. But, as basic as that may be, there are so many different ways, that the statute has to, complicated, covered. We don't have time tonight to go into this. The interesting thing about it is, legislature owes them, but what they've done is set up a program where you're supposed to do it online, that, and you do your training there, that helps, because we don't, first off, they make sure all the other committees are trained the same way, across the continent, and second, they've got the time to go into it, understand how to do it. We spend, I make it five conflict, there really aren't that many come up. As a result, state has training, made it much easier for you, much more, and it takes hours, hours, you're required to do it, and it's effective. So, training is by the conflict of interest council, and they make provides a training session online, you're doing. So you complete the training, subscribe to subsection A, online, all the way, could at least, but within two months after it's been office, one string, secondary, counter, There's no penalty for failing to complete a training, but you're still expected, that part is, the clerk, I think clerk, is the person who's maintaining records showing that you have, all the conflict, right? They're maintained for five years, you're in county. So here's the statute that tells you that the conflict of interest advisory council that, that I've legislated, council also, obvious disclosures, I was talking about my question, I got one from last year, carried over. My first advice, my advice to everybody, talk to the Commonwealth attorney, Commonwealth attorney is responsible for processing the conflict violation. Go to the Commonwealth attorney, Commonwealth attorney says, I don't see any problem with this, might you learn that fact, can't be prosecuted, right, that violation, as long as you do, that's what the letter says. If you give this area to the Commonwealth attorney, do something out, not going to help you, but make that full disclosure to the Commonwealth attorney, then be in a better position, and once they tell you that you've got that immunity, you're good. And you can ask me, and I'll give you my opinion, and can then still be prosecuted, but you're able to say, our county attorney told me I could do this. I'll leave it to you to decide whether it's better to have me as your witness, or just not be prosecuted. Pretty basic, pretty clear, don't get prosecuted. Not trying to shirt, give you advice on it, I'm just telling you the best advice, get it, get it from the best source. Those are the URLs, ethics webinars, they're at the bottom. And you can download this, you'll have that URL, and I have it, probably already, click on it, it starts you down the path. There aren't any real certificates or anything like that, you get, when you register, record The other thing you can do is ask council staff, let's come down and do the training for us, and, following up on what I was saying earlier, I had the problem, I carried over, so I decided I was going to, I just, the opinion I gave was different from Commonwealth attorney, so I said, I think they're, off the council. So I called them, or emailed them, she called me up, I said, I can't help you, February 18th, five years, tied up, but I will call you, right? She did. But I can tell you that if you're looking for anything out of the council, ask for Commonwealth attorney, of course, that's the one, buddy's, I want the gold, Commonwealth And if you file on written opinion, Commonwealth attorney, okay. It's complicated, and the answer's not always clear. It's interesting, because questions don't always, for example, the recent question was, can I do some work for a nonprofit, I love the government, fine. Well, yeah, you can't vote on the money going to the nonprofit in the future. So, the question is not whether you do the works budget, whether, or then I will be able to vote on budget, or at least that part of the budget, cut it out, separate that out. So, a lot of times, it's a question of, how the question's asked, how it's broken down. Ultimately, I think their, my advice has always been there in two ways. One is, I know that a lot of people think, oh, you're, that's moron, yeah, but, there's, I've been taught since day one, it's a crime. So if it looks bad, kind of smells bad, you're probably not doing it right. And there are going to be times, I've, believe me, I've done it plenty of times, where the question's back to you, okay, so it's not an ethics violation, and as I always tell you guys, I don't do politics, sure, really sure you want to do this? And, you know, that's one of those times where you're probably, it's bad, maybe it's smell bad, maybe it's not worth it. And if it is worth it, it's huge, with resigning, whatever, but, and when Bill Gates calls, wants you to be pardoned, but he wants you to be, something, but he wants something from you, the local government, I do believe, don't, don't fall into the trap of, well, technically, it's bad, it smells bad.
Any questions? Uh, yeah, sure, um, so, are voting on budget, voting on budget, and work for part of government, say, broken out, by, in other words, say I'm on EK, and I have some projects, um, that be voted on, um, project, project, I might all be broken out, voted on separately, say I have seen this project, all of it, was all one vote?
It'll, yeah, it, it's not as clean in your minutes, if you take one vote, you approve five projects in one vote, and you vote, and say, well, I vote for all of them except for this one, I'm saying, there's no way that that shows up in the vote, because to show up as an abstention, it's an abstention to all of them, so you're better off having it broken out anyway. And, as you would see in the training, and I didn't go over it, there are all these different definitions of what a personal interest is, is in a project, I'm sure you've already heard all of them, so, once you've determined that you've got that personal interest, then yeah, stay away from it.
Ask the current government.
Yeah, and frankly, if there's going to be discussion at that meeting, I think you need to bring it up at the beginning of the meeting, ask, point out that you're going to abstain consideration of that particular project, and, I mean, I've had some board members who have just left the dice, talked about that particular project, so they don't have, they haven't talked about it to anybody. And, I mean, I've had some, uh, board members who have just left the dais, and they've talked about that particular project, so they don't have, they haven't talked about it to anybody, not gonna discuss it in the meeting. Uh, and they don't want to be up on the dais, they can somehow include someone else, like that. So, uh, that's not a bad idea as well, so, that, you know, getting them separated out, absolutely. Question. They don't. There, if they want, uh, I don't like, I don't like, well. I'll. So. I haven't had them. Get it, make it. Three, four. Etchings, or, or, um, questioning. And I. Here. On it. Uh. Uh. I would, uh. I. Also. Keep that with you. Over. Over. Then, also, uh. Uh. Thank you, sir. Uh, uh. Uh. Hi. Uh. Uh. Yeah, that's, also. Uh. Hey. Uh. Or, uh, publicly, that's, pardon. I would. Right. And. Of the past. How would we have? Uh. Ever. I gave him a letter, a. Uh, yes, I. Uh. However. Always. Yes. Uh. 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 I. Question was, take every, eight. And, based, question, I, I table, table, those. And, I'm. Based, go back, off. County, yes. Four. Those, thank. Uh. First. Uh. I have flowers. Look, I was, what is, do, totally. All. Next. Or. I will, copy. Uh. One, oh. Three. Uh. I just, oh. As. I, uh, uh. That's, uh, crazy. Uh. They will, so you have. Oh, we shot. And. Uh. Well, yeah, I already read. That's. It, uh, I think you have a, a. Uh. And just that one hour, right, time, now, now, it's mine. Uh. It was just not my action. Uh. 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 Thank you.
This is all we got except going into closed meeting, right?
I.
I've got, I've got one more I wanna add to that, and I'll just read it if it's okay. I move that the board convening closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1 to discuss the performance of the county administrator. Be going into closed session. But, I'm sorry, all right, last one motion. Motion, yeah, all right.
And he's, most, I'll, I'll second that.
All of a vote.